The specific site plan for building two, the detailed elevations and the rendering of that, and then likewise, building three and the rendering for that. So if you need to, we've got all of the site plans and the elevations for the buildings in question. We have the renderings for the first three buildings. This is an illustration of what the project would look like in its entirety from Pacific Avenue. If you look at the bottom picture in this slide, that's basically Pacific Avenue from First Street South, or Second Street South to First Street. And then likewise, this is Second Street. It doesn't show up real well, but on this bottom picture, the building on the far left is the building that was proposed at the southeast corner of Second Street, Mountain Avenue. And then there's actually two buildings that you can see. Building number four in front, and then building number one in the back. It just kind of shows up as one long building, but there's actually two buildings there. And then this is the view from Mountain Avenue, looking at the west side of, or the east side of both buildings, one and two. This is looking at building one from Pacific Avenue, and then looking at buildings four and five from Second Street. And then these are the landscaping diagrams. Basically, the planning commission looked at all of the project in its entirety, and while it met the minimum development standards of the Gateway-Specific Plan, they felt that it did not meet the intent of the Gateway-Specific Plan. That calls for the industrial district of the Gateway-Specific Plan to be a light industrial research and development and ancillary facilities. Industrial use is allowed in the district, will be light and clean, primarily high-tech industry that generates little noise or air pollution. No heavy manufacturing will be permitted. They felt it was too intense for the compatibility of the area, being surrounded on three sides by agricultural residential land uses. They felt that the traffic study was deficient in determining what the impacts to the freeway interchanges would be. The traffic study did conclude with all of the street improvements that we've already talked about. The question that recurred with the planning commission was what would be the impact to the freeway interchanges? We did get a letter from Caltrans basically stating that their recommendation would be an additional left turn lane on the northbound Second Street off-road. And that was the entirety of their letter to us. The planning commission also concluded that the master site plan, which is all of the phases combined, is not consistent, again, with the Gateway-Specific Plan, and that all new uses must respect and accommodate existing uses that will remain both within and adjacent to the project area. They determined that the project is such a size that is not consistent with the Gateway-Specific Plan policy to develop a light industrial land use nucleus centering around the existing Norco egg ranch. And then per section 4.1.7 of the Gateway-Specific Plan, it gives the planning commission the responsibility to interpret the provisions of the plan, including the extent to which the developer proposal responds to the plan's goals, objectives, and policies. They determined that the project was too intense to meet that, the intent of those policies of the Gateway-Specific Plan. Based on that, as the city manager indicated, the planning commission denied the site plans and recommended denial of the map that would implement those site plans. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and ask answering questions.
Gentlemen, if you're up. While they're sitting up, do any councilmen have any comments, or prior to them?
I do, with about a week left.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Can everybody see the renderings in the back? We've cut these lights a little bit. Everybody can see, you're okay? Can we, Brenda, can we take these lights here dimmed a bit, so people can see?
Can everyone hear me all right? Well, Mayor Bash, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I realize that this is a special meeting for this project, and while we all have important things to do, we have some important things to take care of, so thank you all for taking the time this evening to be here, including Snap. Thank you. My name is Clark Newhoff with Alair Property Group. I'm here with my project team. To the right of me is Matt Engler, the Development Manager of Alair Property Group, and Eric Avett from Urban Crossroads joins us this evening to discuss traffic-related issues. Due to the complexity of this project and the level of community involvement on an array of topics, we have a lot to cover tonight, and I'll make every effort to be as quick as I can. A summary here of the items that we wish to discuss this evening. For those unfamiliar with their company, I give a very brief company description of Alair. I'll explain why we are here, why we're appealing this planning decision, excuse me, why we're appealing this planning commission decision. We will discuss the project consistency and design elements, and the technical studies of air, traffic, and noise. We'll explore the existing state of the property and how this project contrasts with that. And lastly, I will conclude with the economic benefits of this project. So I'll start with who is Alair. Alair is a local real estate investor, developer, and operator. All of our developments are here in the Tri-County area of Riverside, San Bernardino, Los Angeles. We are the most active inland empire developer over the last five years, having completed projects in San Bernardino, Riverside, Fontana, Rialto, Colton, and Reno Valley. If you were to ask around, which we probably have, we have an overwhelmingly favorable reputation in these jurisdictions. Alair is the fourth-largest industrial landowner in Southern California, and we are also currently the most active developer with 1 million square feet under construction. Naturally, you can find more about us at alairllc.com. Now, there's been a lot of speculation regarding tenants for this project. Our position has never changed on this issue. We do not have any tenants. I wish I could tell you that we did, but it would be just impossible for a tenant to commit to a project like this without a project approval. But shown here are some representative tenants of Alair's, and as you can see, these are great corporate American tenants who would love to be here in Norco. And obviously, a lot of household names with Fender guitars and Smucker's Jam, Kohler, Gillette, UPS, and you can see the rest there. Now, I mentioned all of this for two reasons. First, to highlight the level of companies that would be drawn to Norco when this project is approved. And second, because this project will require capable, capitalized, and responsible development partners, and our reputation, traffic, really speak for themselves. Now, I'd like to spend a little time on the application background and why we're appealing We're here tonight because we were denied a planning commission on September 14, 2011. Now, in the lead-up to that denial, Alair completed all of its technical sequel studies, new studies for air, traffic, noise, biological, and historical. We met with city staff on many occasions, we met with the Architectural Review Board, hosted a well-attended community outreach meeting, we met with Streets and Trails on two occasions, and Planning Commission on two occasions. On balance, the planning commission did an engaged and detailed job, and nearly all aspects of this project were ultimately vetted. Planning commission was satisfied, in fact, Alair was commended on such important items as elevations, oversized setbacks, thoughtful screening elements, our landscaping, our lighting, horse trails, street improvements, and noise restrictions. In fact, on paper, we're just two conditions out of 95 and a development agreement away from an agreement. And yet, with all the hard work on both sides, all the consistency findings, and all that there was to agree on, the project was ultimately denied. Reasons for denial, which are, of course, a public record, included that horses and trucks don't mix, a point I'll touch on briefly a little later, it's all too much too fast, another point that I'll touch on later, and we read the reports, and we don't believe that it's all going to work that way, basically taking a position that a hunch is stronger than the science. Now, any of these explanations reduces the process itself, where the merits and demerits of a project like this are to be drawn from objective, third-party reporting and weighed objectively. But any of these objections, excuse me, but any of these explanations also, in my opinion, are inadequate given the project's importance, importance to us and to Harry in trying to exact our legal rights to the property, importance to the city and its job base and its future, and obvious importance to everybody in this room. So we are here tonight to request your support of this project based on objective assessment of the project findings and commensurate with the importance of this project. Okay, now I'll turn the project in hand. I'd first like to discuss the consistency with both zoning and consistency with the Gateway-Specific Plan. So turning attention to this slide, the project is zoned industrial district in the Specific Plan area. Permitted uses include light assembly, mixed-use, wholesaling and warehousing, intense uses of manufacturing, bakery, compounding, processing, et cetera, and of course, warehouse distribution. I'd like to further point out that it is further consistent with the primary purposes of the Specific Plan, and as I read through these, please note that we are meeting all of these objectives, all of which will be expanded on tonight. The primary purpose of the Specific Plan is to facilitate private development projects, public infrastructure, roadway improvement projects, which will generate the positive, excuse me, the following positive improvements: provide high-quality development standards, help unify the project's area, reflect the community's heritage, strengthen the economic viability of the I-15 corridor, provide a balanced mix of land uses and businesses, deal effectively with traffic and related safety issues, and provide a long-range strategy to mitigate infrastructure and public service deficiencies. I'd also like to note that this zoning has been in place for the better part of 20 years. Now, this is a zoning map of the city. This is the Specific Plan area here with the industrial zoning. Now, Mr. Eisen was too busy running a chicken ranch and assembling the totality of the land to care about developing this property, but had he, or perhaps other owners had Harry not purchased all of the land there, had the will to develop this property in the last 20 years, it may very well have already been fully developed, in stages without consistency of design or quality, and without mitigated or consistent improvements. And this is where the too much, too fast argument falls flat. Aside from the argument not having legal bearing, the development impacts would have already been here under normal economic circumstances, though they would have grown more subtly, and therefore would have stood a much higher likelihood of being unmitigated and definitely inconsistent in quality and theming. So though the broad point has been made that this project is consistent with zoning and the Gateway-Specific Plan, I think that is worth noting that this land use planning is also very conventional. Our opponents will make the argument that warehouse buildings in other areas are not residential adjacent. This is untrue. Others may say that this project is improperly zoned. In fact, Gateway-Specific Plan implements very common land use elements, and Gateway-Specific Plan is the shared model for many neighboring jurisdictions. You would simply need to Google Earth the Inland Empire to find dozens of examples of warehouse residential adjacencies, and here are just a few examples. So this is Corona, our neighbors to the south, with large warehouses adjacent to residential. This is the city of Ontario. This is about 8 million square feet of industrial next to the residential. This is North Fontana, Black and Decker Under Armour campus, 3 million square feet next to residential. This is the city of Rialto, Target Center, North Rialto. That's 2 million, 2.5 million square feet of Target Center. And this is probably the best example. This is Fontana Gateway. This is the Empire Retail Center, very successful retail. This is about 3.2 million square feet of industrial buildings, and this is a successful residential project. In fact, this is residential as well. This is residential, and when this is built out, you'll see that this is a very successful project with commercial fronting the freeway, industrial in the middle, and residential on three sides. And one final point regarding the zoning, the existing zoning is not our fault, or anyone's fault, for that matter, in this room, unless you were here 20 years ago when the Gateway-Specific Plan was put together. And what I mean by that is that we, or any other applicant, should not be penalized for wanting to use this property for its legal intended use. So to summarize this very important point, the project is consistent with zoning and the Gateway-Specific Plan. Under normal circumstances, the property would have already been developed and impacted, or at least substantially developed, albeit over a couple of decades, and likely unmitigated as opposed to over several years and fully mitigated. So the impacts would have already been here. And third, this land use planning element is very conventional, as we've seen. It's not at all unique to the city of Norco, and it has worked in many other jurisdictions. Okay, so I'd like to be, move gears here a bit, talk about the site plan itself. For this, I'll try to stay really on point, because Steve did a good job of, at least the aesthetic portion of it. Now, the seminal design feature of this project is that there is no truck access to the property from First, Second, or Pacific. The only trucks access to the site is from Mountain, fronting the industrial zones. So on three sides of the project, there's absolutely no truck access. It's all contained within the industrial zones on Mountain Avenue at these points of entrance. There's very limited car access on First and Second, just one drive on First Street right here, and only one fire access on Second Street. Design was a result of, oh, and I should note, too, there's absolutely no access, Kathy, I'm afraid of that. And well, you know, I can, absolute no access vehicle or truck on Pacific Avenue. This design was a result of the public staff and public works input with an effective approach to restricting vehicle access on residential streets. And so from a transportation pattern standpoint, you can again see that only, the only truck access to the property is from Mountain Avenue, and there is no truck access on First, Second, or Pacific. While the limited vehicle access is the most functional part of the design, there are some aesthetic points, and for this, once again, I will be quick, since Steve has encapsulated most of it, and planning commission thoroughly vetted this. We will naturally have riding trails, and along with the riding trails, there'd be above-standard park-like buffers, and this is not the best presentation for this, but on Pacific Avenue, there'll be a 50-foot landscape buffer and a 12-foot riding trail. On First Street, there'll be a 25-foot landscape buffer along with the 12-foot riding trail. And then on First Street, there'd be a 20-foot landscape buffer along with a 12-foot riding trail. So on Pacific, until you get to a sound attenuation wall, there's, with the right-of-way, about 65 feet to the first improvement. On First Street, about, let's see, 20, 30 feet to the first improvement, and on First, about 25 feet. Also with this design, the riders and vehicles rarely mix. Only at three primary locations on Mountain do riders and vehicles intersect, leaving three sides of the park with unfettered riding trails. So on First, Pacific, and, I'm sorry, First, Pacific, and Second, there's very little automobile and rider traffic, excuse me, conflict, and only at these three drives, primary drives, will there be intersection of horses and cars. And it should be noted, too, that, as you know, there are already trucks there, and there's already horses there. So both the trucks and trails are currently there and unregulated, and natural dynamics are a fairly unsafe situation. And then, too, the trailer parking will be completely screened from the public view. On a related topic, Alair's worked hard with staff and the Architectural Review Board to create elevations and landscaping that preserve the Horsetown USA theme. I can further expound on that if you'd like, otherwise I'll let you view these for a second and then move on. If you have questions, we can, we can return to this. On landscaping, too, planning commission appreciated our approach, lots of mature trees, drought-tolerant planting materials across the buildings and parkways. On one final point on site planning, each of our bigger buildings will be certified. For those unfamiliar, this is earned accreditation from the United States Green Building Council and requires such things as building with recycled materials, further recycling construction materials, drought-tolerant landscaping, and electric vehicle outlets. Okay, so I'd like to change gears now to the technical studies themselves. Of note, all new studies tiered off the Specific Plan have been completed for air, traffic, and noise, and I'll start with air. As you're aware, air quality is a complicated regional issue. External factors such as topography, wind, temperatures, inversion are all major factors in air quality. In fact, the 2004 USC report, considered gospel by opponents to warehouses, illustrates that San Dimas and Upland, two bedroom communities with very little industrial base, have on balance worse air quality than Mar-a-Lima and Riverside. This, I think, highlights the regional complexity of this issue. But opponents, both here in Norco and other jurisdictions, have hung their hats on this report printed in 2004, in which data was collected only through 2000, as the Lynch penned an argument depicting warehouses as the cause of bad air quality, and you undoubtedly hear tonight's statistics quoted from that report. And though this report has never been updated to reflect current conditions, our industry, regulators, warehouses, truckers, developers, and owners have taken tremendous steps in the past decade toward better air quality, and here are some of those facts. To start, the ports of LA and Long Beach have made recurring efforts to make for cleaner air. You'll see here tremendous changes that have taken place in just a few short years. Starting in, actually starting in 2008, but then really the pinnacle of success was just this January a few weeks ago, when all trucks that did not meet 2,000 federal clean air quality standards were banned from the ports of LA and Long Beach. Now, this is important because LA and Long Beach are the ports of entry for nearly 80% of the goods processed through Southern California. Trucks that generate from the ports will have, will service Inland Empire buildings, and so the symbiotic effects are quite important. In these slides, you will note that PM10 and PM2.5, basically the bad stuff that we breathe, at the ports are down 30 and 45% respectively in just three short years. Now, focusing more on the region, and given the advances in manufacturing and vehicle emissions technology, the Riverside County air quality trend is also very promising. According to the AQMD monitoring station data and CAR, greenhouse gases are significantly in decline and air quality significantly better. This slide of Riverside depicts a region with much improved and improving air quality, and PM2.5 reduction of nearly 50% in the last eight years alone. Focusing more narrowly on Norco, there's an AQMD monitoring station in the city. The story is the same, the PM10 reductions equalling nearly 50% in the last eight years. In the same time of emissions reductions and air quality improvement, there's been a proliferation of warehouse development in the Inland Empire. So clearly, technological advances are far outstripping the emissions borne by growth. This is obviously important from a human health and quality of living standpoint, but more importantly for this project, but more importantly for this project as well. And so bringing it back to this project where it matters the most tonight, with mitigation and item restrictions and Title 24 mandates, our project is consistent with the South Coast Air Quality Management District's AQMD. And so to summarize the air quality discussion, air quality is a complicated regional issue. Findings of 12 years ago, while of some value on a historical metric, are no longer valid. Rather recent data supports significantly, significant improvements in air quality despite the area's growth as a result of new technologies. And as noted, our project is consistent with those findings. Lastly, to lend a little perspective, this project is 1.5 million square feet at completion, compared with 400 million square feet in the Inland Empire. It's less than one-half of 1% of the industrial base. But you undoubtedly see pictures tonight of the Etawanda and Ten intersection, where a freeway, free major arterioles, and a rail will all converge. This is perhaps one of the busiest transportation corridors on the planet, and it really has nothing to do with this project, and is simply an unfair comparison. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Eric, who will discuss traffic.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm going to be brief, and obviously I'll be here to answer any questions if they arise later this evening, but I wanted to touch on a couple of topics, things that I think are important to make sure are clear in your minds tonight as you deliberate, maybe some things that were inconsistent through the discussion through the planning commission hearings. Firstly, the traffic study that was prepared was indeed a brand-new traffic study that was prepared last spring and summer, so May and June of 2011. An absolutely new traffic study was conducted to assess the potential impacts of the proposed development. The new traffic study was prepared in conformance with traffic study guidelines as adhered to by this city, the county of Riverside, and Caltrans. All of those entities, with the exception of the county, have reviewed the traffic study and provided input on its findings. The traffic study also evaluated the potential impact to this project based on industry standard trip generation factors, meaning how did we assess how many vehicle trips, truck trips, et cetera, would be contributed to the street system by this project. It just so happens that the metrics that we use to assess potential impacts are roughly 30% higher than the most recent trip generation estimates that were established late fall of 2011 by MEOP. MEOP commissioned a study of 31 buildings, all of half-million square feet or larger throughout the Inland Empire, and the trip generation factors that were derived from that specialized study of large warehouse buildings are about 31% lower than what we used to assess traffic impacts for this traffic study. The mitigation measures that were identified as the outcome of this traffic impact analysis for key intersections near the project and in the city, at Hamner and Second, Hamner and Hidden Valley, and at the Second Street ramps of the I-15, were all found to be consistent with the traffic study that was originally prepared for the Norco Gateway-Specific Plan. And lastly, I think it's important to note that with the mitigation measures that are recommended in this study, the intersections that were found to be deficient today, meaning today when we take traffic counts and assess the level of service, there are a number of locations that were studied that are already failing. Those locations have improvements in both delay and level of service based on the mitigation measures that are required of this project. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move to the last of the technical studies, and that's noise. I'd like to quickly address those findings. To start with, the city of Norco does not have a noise ordinance. However, Alair voluntarily undertook and completed a noise study in August of this year, and here are the findings. Mitigation measures as a result of that noise analysis included a 12-foot high wall, excuse me, a 12-foot high wall along the property line where adjacent to residential, providing a 5-foot-high rooftop parafit on HVAC screens where the project is adjacent to residential, and restricting truck activities along the north and west portions of the site between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So graphically, you can see the full height concrete walls noted in bold along the perimeter of the property, and then in gray, you'll note the areas of hours of restriction from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, both in this main project area as well as in this area here. Okay, with the technical studies behind me, I'd like to switch gears to more project and less sequel-related topics. I'd like to talk about the existing conditions of the property itself. Of primary significance, the egg ranch at capacity was running at half of the maximum projected truck trips of 335 per day. This volume was coming from a project that only encumbered 20% of the land area. The egg ranch was, and to a lesser extent is, a very intense operation. Due to the perishable nature of the commodity, the distribution patterns were regular and intense. Additionally, there are no idle restrictions for the trailers, and naturally with the perishable commodity, a lot of idling is necessary without proper electrical hookups. Additionally, there's no truck screening, as you can see in this picture here. Trucks continue to be in view corridors to residential. Also, there's no parking restrictions, there are no parking restrictions, trucks are parked off-site, most anywhere they can find, and there are no horse trails. Riders now simply roam on unimproved, unrail, unsafe right-of-way. Also, the rest of the street improvements and utility infrastructure is completely substandard. Note on this slide as an example, this is Second Street and Pacific. No offense, Eric, but this is basically a burnt-out home, no curb, no gutter.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is Second and Mountain. There's obviously a truck parked off-site, overhead power Obviamente, um truck parqueado fora de local, overhaired power poles, que serão undergroundos como parte deste projeto. Novamente, melhora das ruas, curvas, curvas, bordas, tudo vai entrar. Proporcionada infraestrutura de chuva, etc. Em contraste, este projeto fornecerá restrições de ida de 3 minutos para todos os trucks, screenagem de yard de trailer, 100% de parqueamento de veículo de estrada, novas ruas com curvas, curvas e proporcionalidade de infraestrutura de chuva, undergroundamento de power poles, definido, estabelecido, estabelecido e nível de rastros de andamento com separação clara e segura de veículos e cavalos. E, em breve, este projeto forneceria uma melhora massivamente na função, estética e segurança da área. Deixando esse tópico e para alguns itens importantes dos convites da Planeta que eu acho importante abordar aqui. E os tópicos para discutir rapidamente do Planeta são horas de operação, segurança pública e crime, demanda de serviços da cidade, reivindicação de código, manutenção do paisagem e serviços públicos, e um ponte comercial comercial. E eu vou começar, porém, com horas de operação. Para começar, o projeto é zonado 24/7 sob o Código Municipal e general... desculpe, e plano específico de entrada. Não estamos pedindo algo extraordinário. Mas também, há alguns argumentos materiais contra a restrição de horas de operação. Primeiro, isso severamente impede nossos esforços de marketing. Notamos anteriormente que empresas Fortune 500 que seria um bom搭配 para este projeto. E não é que nenhum desses empresas necessariamente conduz 24/7 operações, mas se tivessem escolha entre um edifício que tinha horas de restrição e um que não, eles certamente gravitariam para o que não. Segundo, tal restrição criaria consequências inintendidas. Consequências que eu notei que a Planeta estava fazendo grandes esforços para evitar. Estas consequências incluem sono de noite e extração de truck. Como exemplo, se as horas são restritas de 10:00 até 5:00, como alguns sugeriram, uma chegada de 10:00 de um truck driver precisaria fazer accommodations de noite, incentivando ou dormindo em local, ou fora de local, em algum lugar, e se fora de local, certamente retornando na manhã primeira, criando extração de truck. E assim, disfuncionalmente, não funciona bem e cria outros problemas. Também, já fizemos um estudo de som, como notado anteriormente, e mitigamos em essas adjacentes residenciais. E assim, para o sucesso de marketing do projeto, evitando consequências inintendidas, e o fato de que já temos sido totalmente mitigados por problemas de som, queremos manter o direito a operação 24/7. Vamos agora passar para segurança, segurança pública e crime. Para começar, esses alquileres fazem uma livelihood para fazer, armazenar ou transportar e armazenar produtos. Em muitos casos, o inventário desses edifícios faz parte de uma boa parte dos ativos em seus balanceiros. Esses alquileres, portanto, são altamente seguramente conscientes. Porque nós, como alquileres, não sabemos a natureza exata de suas necessidades de segurança, o alquiler administra seus próprios problemas de segurança. Mas em nosso portfolio, esses alquileres têm esses edifícios bloqueados e seguros. Por design, os edifícios são concretos e com poucas aberturas, principalmente, o área de oficina é de apenas interesse pedestrianal. Portanto, as estatísticas de crime se comportam como vocês esperavam. Mais crime ocorre em residências e centros de vendas do que em centros industriais. Esta é uma lista de departamentos de polícia que entrevistamos, e o narrativa foi consistente em todo o lado. A mapping crime confirma que o crime de um warehouse é o menor de qualquer setor por uma larga margem. Como os riscos de prostituição que têm sido tão capitalmente abordados aqui, e certamente virão de novo hoje, estatísticas desviam essa noção de fantasia. E então, começando com estatísticas de crime baixas, esses edifícios colocam uma demanda relativamente mínima de serviços da cidade, fogo e utilidade, como exemplo. Esses edifícios usam muito pouco água e suor e são equipados com sistemas automáticos de esfregos projetados para expulsar o fogo, ao invés de simples contenção. E isso também se comporta em finanças da cidade, onde cidades com grandes bases industriais, como Ontario, Fontana, Rancho Guzmaga, frequentemente correntes e têm surpresas significantes. Mesmo assim, o layer tem um conceito separado para fornecer uma forma de financiamento para segurança e compliance com o código. Em reivindicação de código, o layer entrará em um acordo de desenvolvimento para fornecer personagens de reivindicação de código para coisas como reivindicação de estradas e segurança. E passamos para manutenção do paisagem e serviços públicos. Havia bastante preocupação sobre quem mantendêria as ruas e paisagem dentro do rastro público, e assim, eu noto o seguinte. O grupo de propriedade entrará em um acordo de desenvolvimento com a cidade, que dictará que o projeto reembolsa a cidade por expensas reais para manter rastros de paisagem e rastros de andamento. Também será necessário que o projeto pague um pagamento anual para deslocar o custo de serviços de segurança pública, manutenção de estrada e compliance com o código. O acordo de desenvolvimento será registrado contra a propriedade, correndo com a terra, garantindo que quem possui a propriedade será responsável por essas obrigações. Eu gostaria de rapidamente abordar o ponte comercial comercial. Muito foi feito de construir um ponte de propriedade industrial para o prédio comercial. Como vocês sabem, o prédio comercial não faz parte desta aplicação. E assim, se a condição for, o ponte não será construída por nós, e se houver uso relativo, como a estação de combustível, o custo do ponte seria um competimento econômico em desenvolvimento de local. Eu vou deixar esse tópico aí, mas se houver mais questões, algo mais a explorar nesse bando, eu estaria feliz de falar com vocês sobre isso hoje. Agora, eu gostaria de completar a parte formal desta apresentação notando os benefícios econômicos derivados deste projeto. Para começar, o Norco College de Gestão de Redes de Comunidade, um recurso tremendo aqui na cidade de Norco, e para quem não tomou uma visita à sala, eu sugeriria, fornecer informação de salário para trabalhadores de um warehouse, e esta slide mostra essa informação. Operadores de warehouse de nível de entrada ganham entre $23,000 e $36,000. Nível médio, $47,000 a $78,000. E planners, gerentes e engenheiros de nível avançado, entre $60,000 e $93,000. Então, você pode ver que esses são empregos de boa qualidade, bem pago. Segundo, nós reunimos dados econômicos de criação de empregos. De acordo com um relatório de Dr. John Hughes, do Economic Politics, Inc., em San Bernardino County, um banco de dados analisando níveis de emprego de locais de estacionamento traz 170 milhões, desculpe, 107 milhões de m2. Isso é cerca de quarto da base industrial, e mostra 47,000 empregos, ou um emprego, para cada 2,263 m2, com um rendimento médio de 2009 de cerca de $42,000. Então, por extrapolação, neste projeto, de 1,6 milhões de m2, podemos esperar 696 novos empregos permanentes. $30 milhões de rendimento anual adicionado à área, e eu realmente acho que esses são os dois números nesta slide que eu quero citar, é criação de empregos e rendimento na área. Naturalmente, haverá despesas de construção de cerca de $79 milhões também, fornecendo 581 empregos de construção, e rendimentos relacionados com construção associados a esses empregos de 37 milhões. Agora, esses empregos também têm o efeito secundário de criar empregos de suporte em setores de vendas e serviços vizinhos, o que é basicamente conhecido como efeito multiplicador. E então, só faz sentido que com este tipo de criação de empregos e potencial, esses caras gastarão dinheiro aqui no Norco em comida, gás, recreio, transporte e alojo. E então, o benefício econômico direto de impostos de projectos e impostos de propriedade real. Então, para este projeto, estimamos com os custos de escola da cidade de $750,000, impostos de parque de $750,000, impostos de segurança de edifícios, $580,000, um imposto de Norco direto, $1,8 mil, e impostos de transporte de $2,7 mil. Impostos de projeto em ordem de $6,6 mil. Além disso, impostos de propriedade anual, se for completamente construído e assessorado, serão $1,250,000. E enquanto os críticos citarão esses impostos como um tempo, e eles têm um ponto alegado, são muitos impostos, $6,6 mil de impostos de um tempo. Além disso, haverá impostos de recompensa para armazena, fixaturização de equipamento e recompensa de impostos de propriedade. E então, para resumir hoje, o grupo de propriedade está aqui hoje para pedir seu apoio a este projeto. Como notado, o projeto é consistente com o zonamento e plano específico de entrada. Além disso, como vimos, seu elemento de uso de terra é bastante convencional. O plano de lado bem pensado restringe acesso de truck às zonas industriais, e o design será tanto gostoso quanto funcional, com rastros de andamento seguros. O projeto é totalmente mitigado para tráfego, ar e som. Esses tipos de parques são seguros e seguros, com muito pouco demanda em serviços da cidade. E, finalmente, este projeto vem com um enorme benefício econômico. Muito necessário, empregos bem pagos, impostos, e rendimentos de impostos. E então, novamente, pedimos seu apoio a este projeto hoje. Um voto a favor desse projeto, desculpe, um voto a favor desse projeto é um voto a favor de progresso econômico para a cidade de Norco e seus cidadãos. Obrigado pela consideração, eu estou muito a favor do projeto.
Obrigado. Pode pegar as luzes? Por favor. Obrigado. Nós temos alguns cadeiras, se vocês quiserem cadeiras aqui no centro. Se vocês quiserem ficar, é tudo bem. Eu acho que vou levar para o conselho, fazer alguma coisa antes da audiência de comentários públicos. Alguns comentários? Perguntas, eu estou falando, eu estou falando. Tudo bem, então, vamos para comentários públicos. Eu acho que card número um. Então, novamente, apenas para te lembrar, se você puder, se você sabe que seu número está chegando, você pode ser um pouco de acordo e, tipo, pegar aqui se quiser, nós definitivamente queremos ouvir de você. E também, se você só quer falar o que sua opinião é ou não é, isso também é bom. Qual é o número um?
O número um? Quando seu número é chamado, se você pudesse, apenas dizer seu nome, não precisa dizer sua endereço.
Se o número dois pudesse ser...
Sr. Presidente, membros do Conselho de Cidade, meu nome é Sharon Higman, sou residente de 36 anos aqui. Todos sabemos que a Planeta, com sua inminente sabedoria, descobriu este projeto, e vocês vão ouvir muitos problemas legítimos por não permitir esse projeto de não lucro a nossa cidade. Não tem rendimento de isso, exceto 1% do imposto. O que eu tenho medo de hoje, eu quero abordar, é o fluxo de segunda rua. Às vezes, em convites de conselhos, foi dito, um e outros têm levado ao custo de uma possibilidade de ampliação do rampa de segunda rua do norte. E o que seria e quem pagaria por isso? Eu falei que é o problema de Caltrans, mas isso não é verdade. Recebi uma carta de Caltrans dizendo...
Sharon, espera um segundo, Bill, pode me ajudar com o microfone lá, por favor? Só abaixar.
Quero minuto, por favor.
Sharon, é um microfone direcional, se você não fala direto nele, você vai em e fora? Eu acho que iria para o lado. Obrigado, Bill.
E essa é, acredito, a carta que Steve estava falando sobre. Mas, de qualquer forma, Caltrans também me informou que, de fato, a cidade de Norco esperaria pagar todos os custos de construção para acolher o aumento do fluxo de tráfego. Eles mencionaram que o custo geralmente é passado pelo contratante, e eu me pergunto se isso foi feito. Para Caltrans, o estudo de tráfego que eles usaram foi de 1991 e atualizado pelo desenvolvedor, que é alguém que eles declinam de dar essa informação. A carta diz de Caltrans, "Na interseção do norte, I-15, rampa de segunda rua, no ano 2014, horas de peak de AMP, curvas de esquerda de 860/597, DPH e LOS é F e falha. Dúvidas de curvas de esquerda são necessárias para mitigar a perda de D ou melhor." Em inglês plaino, Caltrans está dizendo, baseado na informação que foram dadas, que no ano 2014, no norte, I-15, rampa de segunda rua, haverá 860 veículos por hora fazendo curvas de esquerda em horas de peak de AMP, e 597 veículos por hora fazendo curvas de esquerda em horas de peak de PM, o que significa que Caltrans terá que mitigar a situação ao ampliar o norte, I-15, rampa de segunda rua, para dúvidas de curvas de esquerda, levando o nível de serviço, o LOS, para D, grade D, de F, que falhou. F significa tráfego parado, bloqueado, D significa tráfego movendo, mas parar e ir. O que vai ser se tirarmos 3200 trucks? Verifiquei com vários engenheiros, tanto de Caltrans quanto de outras entidades, o custo hoje seria em excesso de $200,000. O que será em 2014 e quem pagará? Espero que não tenhamos que se preocupar com isso se o Conselho de Cidade faz o trabalho e nega este projeto para proteger Norco, também conhecido como Horstown USA e seus cidadãos. Eu não sou oposta ao desenvolvimento da pista de abacaxi, apenas não uma distribuição de truck de nenhuma altura. Eu sou certa que podemos encontrar empresas que são lucro, pontos de venda, gerir um imposto de vendas que vão encaixar lá. Obrigado.
Então, o número três está aí.
Bem-vindo, conselhos, membros do Conselho, meu nome é Cat Oliver, residente de Norco de 34 anos. Nossa Planeta, dedicada, sabia e confiável, soberne e corretamente concluiu que este projeto não é consistente com o plano específico de entrada por sua enorme dimensão. É demasiado grande e amenazou o uso intenso, com o estudo de tráfego certamente não suficientemente completo para o ecossistema norco. Eu não me importo e não estou impressionada pelas outras cidades do área que têm warehouses mega em suas áreas residenciais. É ainda não para Norco rural. Claro, também estamos cientes de que há uma vastura de imãs de warehouses mega no área, e toda a vizinhança escolar de Merelloma e Ouro Valley, com poluição diesel que requer que os filhos escolares usem aspiradores de asta antes ou depois de saída de refeições. Existem três escolas nesse projeto. O plano específico de entrada lista uma dezena de projetos de dimensão aceitavel que não criaria mais tráfego do que o tráfego da pista de abacaxi original. Eu vivi com isso e eu poderia continuar a viver com esse tanto de tráfego. Mas eu sou contra este projeto em particular por sua dimensão, e eu respeito a demanda de você votar contra ele como proposto, façam ele escalar um pouco. Obrigado.
Bem-vindo, meu nome é Linda Dixon, e fiquei feliz de ouvir que alguns de nossos comentários tomaram conta e ele tentou espelhar apenas tudo o que as pessoas disseram, mas ele era errado em a maioria dos seus respostas. Eu opongo este projeto por muitas razões. Intensidade de local, um warehouse de 1 milhão de m2, centro de distribuição, campus, qualquer que seja o que for chamar. De acordo com o plano específico de entrada, no distrito industrial, as limitações de uso permittido são: "Nenhuma operação e uso conduzido nas prêmios deveriam ser objecionáveis por causa de sombra, polvo, odor, fumo, vibração ou outras causas similares." Eles acharam todos. Nossos filhos agora devem caminhar para a escola se forem dentro de um raio de 2 mil. O grupo de Ouro Valley, para o Centro de Ação e Justiça Ambiental, fez extensões de estudos por anos, não apenas em 2005, com agências locais, regionais, estaduais, e agora está unida pelo Attorney General do Estado de Califórnia para que truck centers, como é proposto aqui, não sejam construídos em lugares próximos a áreas residenciais. Estudos mostram que os filhos de Merelloma têm a capacidade de pulmão mais fraca, a maior growl de pulmão de todos os filhos de Southern California por causa da poluição particula. Eu ouvi muitas histórias sobre os filhos e senhores, eu fui lá, fizemos nossa diligência, e as doenças que ocorrem depois de serem expostos a centros de distribuição de truck. Mas hoje eu ouvi um fim feliz. Um filho que tinha asta como resultado desta exposição, está completamente recuperada da doença. Como isso aconteceu? A família fugiu da área. Queremos usar ou perder nossos cidadãos por causa de um projeto desse tipo? Eles afirmam que estão fazendo a cidade um grande favor por colocar melhora das ruas e rastros, não é verdade. Essas melhora são por seu próprio benefício. Os grandes carros não poderiam operar nas ruas de nosso vizinho como estão agora. Eles precisam de espaço para voltar, eles precisam de espaço para dirigir. Nossas ruas nessa área são projetadas para nosso vizinho, e industrial, e comercial. E eles ficaram bem, mas não eram suficientemente largas para todos os grandes carros. Eles estão pedindo 3,232 veículos adicionais por dia usando essas ruas. Não é um caso de ser inconveniente ou não poder sair das nossas ruas. É uma ameaça para nosso estilo de vida, todos sabemos isso. Nós lutamos para manter isso, isso é apenas outra luta. Mas isso também é uma ameaça para nossa saúde. But this is also a threat to our health, the health of our children, our animals, a threat to the safety of our community. It's a forever project.
Thank you, Linda. Number four, number five is on deck.
My name is Ed Dixon. This project is not light industrial, high-tech, as the specific plan states. Second, the traffic load of this project, when built out, will increase the traffic on the 12 intersections indicated by 30%. This amounts to 38,000 vehicles per day. We are already LOSF at some of these intersections. This project should never be built against a residential area. On his traffic counts that exist today at Second and Hamer, I have counted the cars there approximately five different times and my counts exceed his counts by 1,000 vehicles per hour. So where he gets his counts, I don't know, but the guy who was counting was there the same day I was. As far as the idling conditions being adhered to, I can tell you, I've spent many days at the Miraloma Trucks Costco Center, which is about the same size as this project. Not all the trucks adhere to the three-minute idling. I can guarantee you that. And for the 2007 later trucks that are not permitted in the port, at the time I counted these trucks at Costco Distribution Center, 25 out of the 59 trucks in a 15-minute period were pre-2007 trucks. So I do not believe that 2007 trucks will be at this site. The citizens of Norco are entitled to have clean air and to breathe and no gridlocked streets. Your planning commission and streets and trails oppose this project. Please respect their decision and deny this project.
Six is on deck.
Hi, my name is Donna Johnson.
Hi, Dawn.
It's a directional mic, so you can speak right into it. Sorry.
My name is Donna Johnson. I live on Bronf, or, I don't like doing this kind of stuff. I'm a sole lay-in here in Norco and I've lived here for 31 years and we have been fighting and fighting to try to keep our town what it is. And this is one big sore thing that's coming up and I just want to let you know I'm 100% against it.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Woody Harple. I work for Calvert Real Properties in Corona. I own property of 2634 through 2346 Hamer Avenue. It's a retail shopping center and also own a home at 4643 Trail Street. I'm here to request the support of the Norco egg ranch project. This subject property has been zoned for industrial uses for 21 years. Both projects, this legal use, lies with the Norco zoning of the property. It's all about property owner's rights. The property owner is allowed to develop his, his or her property for every use that is allowed in the zoning code and his proposed, proposed industrial warehouse is permitted. This is no different than a property owner that has a half-acre horse ranch who can, wants to keep livestock on their property. They have zoning rights and they should be able to use those properties for that reason. Why should the city of Norco deny Mr. Eisen the property rights that, that, and his opportunity to sell his property for development when the property has been zoned for industrial and warehouse uses? Development is a, development of land is a legal use allowed by zoning code and is a basic American right and we should allow this project.
Thank you, Woody. That's enough. No, seriously. You know what? You're going to have an opportunity to speak, but the one thing I, I do not want to hear is booing and catcalling. This, you have a right to stand up here and say your piece without people coming down on you. Please, respect that. Please. I'm sorry. Welcome.
My name is Nancy Gilmore. I'm here...
I wonder what happened to seven o'clock. I walked in, the third person was already speaking, now I'm the sixth person now. What time did the meeting start?
You said it very well so far.
For the people of Norco, we are a small town and we have a small area in our town. So one area of the town, what goes on there is going to affect the entire town, not just to one southwest corner, it's going to affect the whole town of Norco. And so if you, you know, you put in something which is going to cause a lot of pollution, that pollution will not just stay on the southwest part of town, it's going to go to the other side. It's going to go up Sixth Street, it's going to go up Seventh Street, it's going to go everywhere else around town. It's going to go up against the mountains. So this is something that, you know, I think we have to look at, plus the fact that if we have this in there and if this is a thing which does not seem to be really beneficial for anyone with horses and we decide then that that section of town, it's okay, we can sacrifice that section of town to keep the rest of the town, Norco, then the people who live there who want horses, they'll move someplace else. People will move into that section of town who do not necessarily want horses and maybe will definitely vote against having horses. And then we will not be Norco horsetown anymore. So I please ask you guys on the council to think about that when you vote. Thank you.
Number nine is coming up.
Hi, there is Nancy Chrysler and I work for a trucking company. I've been in trucking since...
You know, you need to speak, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Chrysler. I've lived here in Norco for two years. I bought here because I wanted the property for my horses that have, live a country lifestyle. I, like I say, I've owned and worked for a trucking company since 1987. I've had a 200,000 square foot warehouse in Ontario. I'm familiar with noise, I'm familiar with the congestion, I'm familiar with the air One comment that was made was on the quality of the trucks coming from the port. Not all the trucks that come into these warehouses are from the port. They're from Canada, they're from the back east, they're from Mexico. Not all these trucks have to come up to the standards that the trucks from the ports do. That's one point. When you mentioned the facilities in Riverside, Corona, Rialto, and Fontana, none of those facilities are in a community like ours that has the half-acre, larger lots with our horses and our chickens and our animals. To me, this project, I came to all the meetings, all the things that we discussed there, I don't see it have changed. We were able to stop this then and I just hope that we're able to stop it now. Thank you very much.
What time did your flyer go at?
Number 10.
What time is it?
Or I see Google.
It started at six. Sure, it's mine, but yeah.
Ma'am, ma'am, you need to hold the microphone. You need to, you need to sneak into the microphone.
Oh, I may lose when I'm going straight. I just know that Norco will never be the same if these salesmen, we believe what they say, will send us, sell us a bill of goods. It will never be the same. I don't know how much money Norco needs to survive. I heard at one time it's $2,000 if they let these guys in. The permits, the sewers, you know, Norco is so picky that you can't even, put an ash pan up the wrong angle. And they're going to let these guys sell us this stuff. The, the air is really going to improve when these trucks are sitting there burning their, their trucks for three or four minutes, the diesel fumes. It's not healthy for anybody. And like I say, it's never going to be the same if you buy what they're selling.
Right on.
That's a hard one to follow. And for me to say that. There's no argument that there has been a great sales job done on this. I sometimes feel like I've been listening to time shares or subprime, zero alarm. The problem is not what they've done. Alireh has done a great presentation. I haven't been too thrilled with Mr. Bennett, but Alireh has done a good presentation. It's the fine print. Any way you look at it, you do not build two 500,000 square foot buildings unless you plan to fill them. You do not make 347 truck bays unless you want trucks there. And just the idea that 24/7 is not even on their option, how are we going to control this? We can't control the cut-through traffic as it is. We've had hidden runs with our children, not even on horses. One policeman is not going to stop or help us. Are we going to stop every truck coming down through Riverside to find out if they're going to this truck depot? More trucks? The buses weren't even allowed to idle behind Target because of the air emissions. What are 347? And we're not talking about one trip in. They're looking to, they readily admit it, UPS, Kohler, Lowe's. This isn't one trip in, this is multiple trips in. And I don't care how many dollars have been promised to this town or the Lake Norconian or the pet projects or to the ROTC or to the schools. This town is not for sale. I didn't move to this town to work. I moved to this town to live. Live with my horses, live with my neighbors. This is not Rialto. I don't want it to be Rialto. This is not on time. This is not the size of our territorial landmark. This is horsetown USA. And whether you have a horse or not, you owe it to the horses for the large properties. We want to keep these large properties. We want to keep our animals. We want to keep the freedom that if you want to build a swimming pool or an accessory building in that half acre to two acres, fine, but make our trails safe, make our streets safe. And we're not doing it with a project such as this. Thank you.
Number 12 is next.
Good evening.
I'm Mike Thompson. I just live off of Second Street and, you know, boys, I was here 20 years ago when they, they built the gateway specific plan. And this isn't what I understood to be intended. Buildings one and two...
You need to make sure you speak into the microphone.
Buildings one and two are just outrageous, how big they are. That was never the intent of the gateway plan. Because I was at those meetings and they've got to have a mega tenant in the wings or they wouldn't be pushing this so hard. And why, why are we so attractive when they're pushing for this? They can offer this to a tenant, but it doesn't have to tangle with any other truck traffic like up the road. Truck access, truck access in this area is already closed at the northbound 15 and Hidden Valley off-ramp. But, you know, so that leaves Second Street. Now you sit at that intersection and you just watch the trucks rolling off of Hidden Valley and Hamer, going southbound on, on Main Street and Hamer. The, the lurid traffic, you know, idea of this thing is impossible. So you're, you're talking about closing Second Street, heading west of Mount, of Mountain Island. Well, what's the Stater Brother trucks and stuff going to do that go that way now? There's truck traffic already uses that corridor. The river road's not closed, the tractor trucks, you know? And we've got one sheriff on duty for patrol. Then truck drivers are going to be finding all the back roads that it takes to get to that place on a 24/7 operation. See, when the, when the sun goes down, that's when the ports want to move their cargo. And these, and these trucks, these, these trucks are going to be looking at the 91 and Lincoln Avenue off-ramps and Main Street and they're going to come up to Hidden Valley and Second Street and look at the, for anybody's been around, look at the trucks that used to run the cheese factory. They were all over the place back on that end of town, even though a bunch of those truck route only roads were posted. So I'm retired 35 years from the ports and I've been involved with the, the truck and the cargo off the docks, also on the side. And the nighttime, you know, that's, these companies don't like to pay overtime and night shift wages to management and office personnel and that's when they like to move cargo, at night. And then, then they use the daytime when everybody's there on a payroll to sort cargo and reload it for distribution and everything, so. And then ports at night are going to be a mess. Because I worked in the middle of it and that's when they went big to get out of them ports. That's your 24/7 operations with the ports. Press Telegram just had a article they kicked loose here about the truck lanes, they've got a plan, truck lanes only on the 60 freeway that'll be east-westbound from the 710. So if they close the 91, the tractor trailers, that's going to put everything on the 15. There you go, 60, Second Street, you know, we're just, our roads are going to eat it. And jury's still out on this diesel field.
Thank you very much.
As far as I'm concerned. Please, don't undo this.
Number 12.
Good evening. How you doing? A lot of people here today, huh? An important subject? Yep, I think so. I'm here for it. At least for us to look at it and let the site plan go through. We're asking, they're asking for a site plan. We don't know what's going to come in here. We're all assuming the worst. Let's hear what they have to say, let the site plan come through. Hell, they might put in six toilets and a booby bar over there. We don't know. But let's put something in that needs to go there that can bring some revenue into the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number 13.
Go to 14.
Uh, go to 14. There's no 13, is that there? Oh, okay. And 15 follows. You're on the hot seat, Diane.
Good evening. My name is Diane Collins. I do not approve of this project on so many different levels. One, though, that I don't hear anybody talking about regarding noise is the backup alarms on the trucks. They go beep, 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 beep every time one of those thousands of trucks backs up to one of those hundreds of bay doors. No wall, no vegetation, nothing is going to prevent that beeping from interfering with the lives of the residents that live surrounding that property. I just, I can't believe no one else has been talking about the beeping, so I thought I would bring it to your attention. I do not approve of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 15.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I, I am very impressed with all of Alireh's presentations. There's an enormous amount of information. I'd be more impressed if there was somebody doing an opposing study. There's an old saying in business that figures don't lie, the liar's figure. We keep being told that something that looks like a, walks like a duck and quacks like a duck is not a duck. It is, in fact, a flamingo. Mark Twain once said, "It's not the parts of the Bible I don't understand that scare me, it's the parts that I do understand." I don't understand all of the future ramifications and impacts of this Alireh project. The parts that I do scare the hell out of me. I do understand the hundreds of large trucks going in and out with pollution, noise, and error. I do understand that no matter what they say, that there will be crime and drugs and prostitution. I do understand that a few pretty building facades and some bushes won't vindicate or obscure what's really behind them. I do understand that our town of Norco, our horsetown, will never, never, ever be the same. It cannot be. I do understand that in the corporate, corporate world these folks come from, no price is too high. I do understand that in the corporate world these folks come from, no price is too high, no sacrifice too big, nothing so sacrificial as to block success of their project so long as they're not the ones that have to pay the price. I do understand that if we do this, we're being sold out and sold out cheap. I do understand that you can't swim in muddy water without getting dirty. And I hope you, our City Council, understand that we expect you to do your jobs and to serve us and to protect us and not turn Norco into an oil spot on the 15 freeway. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm Danny Azavito and I am the President of the Horsemen's Association and speaking behalf of the organization. I'd like to read a portion of our mission statement that our organization's about. The Horsemen's Association, we're here to promote and preserve the large lots and animal keeping lifestyle that we now enjoy. We do, however, support issues and policies which are directly related to keep in Norco Norco. Norco is different from all other cities. People move here because of the rural atmosphere and you won't find another city government as dedicated to keeping this large lots and animals. And now, it's a dream to come true that things could stay this way without a fight. And we are here, we are here today for a fight. And that's why this group was founded, to protect and maintain the things that people moved here to enjoy. First of all, Norco Horsemen's Associations, we do not approve of this project. There could be a project that would fit there, that would be rural, and we could be satisfied, but not this one. I've lived here over 50 years and I've seen things change. Things have to change, but nothing like this. For the last 20 years that NHA has been around, that's what we were here dedicated to, to keep, preserve and keep this town as rural as possible as we could do it. And today, it just shows in our mission statement, we're here to fight for it. I could go on and on, but there's people behind me that'll tell you all the statistics and I could do it myself. But we're here today just for the rural atmosphere that they're destroying. Eight years ago, we decided we're going to make this a destination point as a rural atmosphere, living conditions, and we've done well. Branding Norco, Horsemen's, I mean, Horse Town USA, putting signs, making our buildings look rural, and we're fighting hard. All our City Councils have worked very, very hard at this. For this to come in and destroy a portion of Norco which is small. We're unique and a small area can really show up in an area that's so small as we are. And I feel sorry for the people that live on this side. I know I've talked to people on the other side, they go, "Well, that's not on our side." No, no, that's not how it is. It could spread and it could spread big. This has to stop now. I'd like to see them bring back another project, a project that will fulfill our lifestyle, keep this town the way it is, and so we can live here in harmony with it instead of looking at this and fighting it like we are today. So please, vote. And another thing I thought of, each one of you, each one of you flyers when you were elected said to preserve the lifestyle of Norco. And that was your heading on each one of you. So let's practice what you preach. You seem to have a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number sixteen, right? Seventeen, number seventeen.
My name's Judy Lambert and I'm adamantly opposed to this project for the same reasons everyone else here is. The extreme truck traffic and health hazards. It's the polar opposite of everything that our Norco lifestyle is about. I live nine doors down from Second and Mountain Avenues and I can only imagine how my property values are going to decline if this, if the trucks are constantly going by at the corner of my street 24 hours a day. But there's another aspect of this that we need to address and it's our animals. Not only do we have all kinds of animals in Norco, we have many animals that are athletes. We have J. Cannon horses. We have roping and team penning horses. We have Marion and Cetus's Hunter jumper barn just down the street on Pacific Avenue. We have dressage horses, Spanish riding school, and illusions. All of these athletes are living and working outside 24 hours a day. They don't have a choice to go inside if the pollution from hundreds of trucks foul the air. They don't have a choice to leave for the weekend if their lungs hurt. They don't have a choice, or they can't even tell us if it's bothering them. We, as citizens of a town dedicated to our horses and animals, we owe it to them to protect their health well as our own. This project, this project will cause health problems. This project will cause street damage. This project will cause property values in the area to decline. This project will cause excessive traffic. This project will cost Norco, its citizens, and its animals. I'm not opposed to a different type of development on this property, but let's have something that can benefit Norco aesthetically and financially and not subject our citizens and our animals to health risks that we're sure to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Lambert.
Dan, how you doing?
To me, this project is like being punched below the belt. Other than the upfront money, it brings nothing to the city but a gag. I can't think of a single reason why the people of any city would want a business of this size that doesn't contribute something to that, the amount that is using it. The first meeting at the community center, I briefly spoke to Mr. Bennett about the congestion this project would bring with it, not to mention the decrease in our property values. He said, "They did this in Corona, his phone rang, and our conversation was finished." As a traffic comparison, just look down the 15 to the Magnolia off ramp. There is lots of truck traffic from several different businesses. Most of the trucks which are shorter in length than the 75 footers that will be in, that will be hauling out of Norco. There are also restaurants, retail businesses, and a high school close by. All similar to what is around our Hidden Valley on and off ramps. The Magnolia area was enmeshed with traffic until Corona widened the overpass to seven or eight lanes and added two, added two lanes northbound on ramp. There are still times of the day that it is still congested. I don't know how much improvement it's caused, but I don't think it's in the Norco's budget to do that, especially since some of our existing streets haven't been repaved since I was learning to drive on them 40 plus years ago. I bet that Matt Lynch was concerned about his own property values when a track of $650,000 homes were being proposed near his home. I can only imagine how much of a fight he might put up if I were building 400 truck bays close to his home. I guess one man's castle is another man's slum. I'm saying no to this project. However, I do believe the owner should be able to develop his property, but let's have something that benefits our city, not destroy it. Thank you.
Number nineteen.
Good evening. Good evening. Our mayor, council members, my name is Rachel Lopez and I am here in support of the residents opposing this warehouse project. I am a community organizer here on behalf of the Center for Community Action and Environmental Justice and also a resident of Miraloma. Yep, that city across the area here across the riverbed, the warehouse capital of the Illand Valley. Although other communities and the cities are vying for that notoriety, which they could have if they'd like. Over the past 15 years, studies have linked near roadway pollution to asthma, lung disease, bronchitis, emphysema, heart attacks, depression, forgetfulness, maybe some of the senior issues that we face, autism, harm to human reproduction, pneumonia in those 65 years and older, and most recently a link in DNA damage among many other health concerns. The smallest ultrafine particles in air pollution, which are unregulated, can pass through the lungs, bloodstream, and yes, into the brain. And there are studies that have indicated that there are effects to the brain. An estimated 6% of Riverside area children with asthma are afflicted with this disease because of pollution from a nearby freeway or a busy roadway frequented by diesel spewing trucks, or if you live in close proximity to warehouses like those children that live in our communities in Miraloma who do have the weakest lung function in all of the South Coast Basin. Miraloma has exceeded the federal health standard for particulate pollution for many, many years. Although the health study that was talked about, the children's health study, is not outdated, that is an ongoing USC health study with recent information that was just set out. I believe it is coming out this month if it hasn't already appeared, that still indicates that children living close to roadways that have heavy traffic by diesel spewing trucks also will continue to suffer from asthma, respiratory illnesses, lung function, lung infections, and so on and so on. What I want to show you tonight, and the developer spoke of a air monitoring system that you have here in Norco, and I'm sure that your air system does not show what ours do in Miraloma.
This is a clean air filter--
No, ma'am, you have to address the council--
This is a clean air filter in those monitoring systems--
You have to address us.
This is a clean air filter and a monitoring system. It's nice and white 24 hours later. This is an air filter system at Van Gielan Elementary School in Miraloma.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Number twenty. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, my name is Bob Nikus and I've been in the trucking industry for about 31 years and I totally oppose that kind of truck at Vicar Margot.
Thank you.
My name's Jody Rikers and I just want to say that I am 100% opposed to this project as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight because I have an expressed, my company has expressed interest in the five acre commercial property. We are prepared to build a Western themed card fuel locking station on the five acre parcel on the corner of First Mountain. This key lock fueling station will service the community. The fueling station will have the following: diesel fuel, gasoline, CNG, and card lock stations, or excuse me, and charging stations. I understand how important the sales tax dollars are to the city of Norco and all cities. Fuel sales is the number one tax generator for the city of Norco. We believe this facility would generate a considerable amount of sales tax revenue for the city of Norco. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Flur. I've lived here for 12 years with my husband and my family. My parents have been here for 25 years. They have horses, they love this community as well as I do, which is one of the reasons we came here. It's taken us 10 years to remodel and rebuild our entire house to get to where we want to be, to retire, to live with our families. I totally, and my husband, do not want to see this. We live on Parkerton Second. It takes me 40 minutes sometimes to take my child to Norco High, just in normal traffic. To have this building truck stop here is just not something that we need to have in Norco. I just don't think that it's a good thing. So, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Wayne Stefner. It's been touched on tonight that this, these kind of projects do cause asthma. And it is true that Miraloma suffers very heavily from children that have asthma. We now know why. These particles are small enough to enter the lungs, but large enough so that they're not exhaled. And the reason that children are at such risk is because they breathe deeply, they run. It occurs to me tonight, I don't know what it does to horses, but it's not going to do them any good. This project causes, will cause a great deal of street damage. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, almost all road damage is caused by trucks. This proposal will more than double Norco's truck traffic, which is going to double our road--